All right, we'll call the City Council to order to state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There's a quorum of City Council here, and if you'll stand, our fire chief, Russell Sanders, is going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
What do you want me to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where we live, everything, and justice for all.
Very good. That mayor wouldn't work here.
Hi, we're here tonight to present the first quarterly Golden Tree Award for 2015. The Golden Tree Award is given to businesses in Missouri City that enhance their landscaping at their location, provide funding for park projects, utilize green technology, or volunteer in community greening efforts. And tonight, we want to recognize Michael Rose, CPA with the Morgan Center on Texas Parkway. Want to come up, Michael? Morgan Center is near the main entrance to Missouri City off of Texas Parkway, and he has taken this tract of land where he has enhanced the landscaping there and thus beautifying one of the major entrances to Missouri City. We want to thank him tonight for doing that.
I fail to recognize the fact we've got some of our veterans on the back row back here. Guys, are y'all here for a special something? Or are you just here?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, anyway, thank you for your service. I have a proclamation that says that whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, and emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information received from citizens who telephone the Missouri City Telecommunications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the vital link between the citizens and victims, and they are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are professionals whose behind-the-scenes and often unrecognized actions are responsible for helping protect our community, and whereas the Missouri City telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and they've exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the week of April the 12th through the 18th be designated as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Missouri City in honor of the men and women who diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. And here they are. Come out, anyway. Come out on our own duty.
You know, oftentimes, the police department and our police officers and firefighters get a lot of the credit for things that go well when emergency services handled, but without the ladies and the few gentlemen we have working in our emergency telecommunications center, all of that wouldn't even be possible. So they're kind of like the quarterback or the pitcher. They handle the ball every time, and I think oftentimes, we forget that, and it's nice that the city's recognizing them. And I think one week's probably not enough to recognize their talents. We try to recognize them every day, but we really couldn't survive without the angels watching over us, and these really are the angels watching over all of you. So, thank you, Chief.
I need to echo what Chief Bearson says. I mean, these ladies and the gentlemen are the first contacts when you call in. They are the first voice that you hear that represents the Missouri City Police Department or the Fire Department. But not only that, on the backside of it, on the incidents, oftentimes, it's the telecommunication officers that has that ear that hears something that we didn't hear on the fire scene, a radio, that faint radio call. So it is, not only do they help the citizens, but they also protect us, and thank y'all for what y'all do every day. Appreciate it.
I failed to mention before we got started that our thoughts and prayers need to be with Dan Flag and his family. Dan, police officer for our city for many years, I think he's even still doing some bailiff work for us. Dan lost his wife last weekend unexpectedly, and we just need to keep Dan and their children in our prayers and thoughts as they deal with this tragic loss of their loved ones. Thank you all for doing that. All right, item four, public comments. I did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Item five, our staff reports. Presentation regarding the fiscal year 2015 Police Department Budget.
Mayor, Mr. Council, City Manager contacted me that there was a request to do a presentation on this matter due to some of the information that's been out in the public regarding the Police Department budget and the idea that their budget had been cut severely this year compared to the past. And I want to go through a couple items that make up the budget, and as I go through this, this policy is something that was done across the city with all departments. As I lay this out, I wanted you to understand that. In fiscal year 2015, which we're in, the city centralized the fleet, building maintenance, and information technology operations during the budget process from, we used to have it in each individual department, each of those functions, and now we have taken it and we have created departments of each of those functions, that being fleet, building maintenance, and information technology. That way, we can watch and see exactly what it is costing us to operate fleet, to operate building maintenance, and operate information technology as it relates to service to the departments. Benefits from that is that it eliminates the need for monthly transfers that we would have to do in order to make the accounting for each of the functions that took place or the activities that took place. This allows us to see the true cost of these services to the organization, and that's per function and per department. And the expenditures are more easily identifiable as to the type of expenditure being made. In addition, during the fiscal year 2014 budget, we made another change, and that was the cost of grants. We took and centralized those just as we did with the building maintenance function, fleet maintenance, and the information technology that I just mentioned. In the case of the police department, the funds that were grant-related to the department, we moved, being the tracking of the reimbursements and the cost of those grants, we had several grants within the police department itself, that being the cops grant, burglary and auto theft grant, which we refer to as BAT grant. These changes alone created a reduction in the police department of $565,061 in the fiscal year 2014 budget. But as I've mentioned, it may have come out of that budget, but then it was accounted for an increase in the grants funding budget that we created to track grants in one area. In 2015, the same allocation took place, but at a lesser amount, it's $279,000. And as you recall, last year, we were to be at the end of our cops grant funding in, I believe it was August, and we got somewhat of an extension through January. So we did not get the full year this past year as the program is prescribed to do. And so we had to begin paying full cost on the police officers in January of 2015. So...
Bill?
Yes, sir.
That $500,000 reduction, and then it was transferred, what actually, how did that impact the pockets of other police officers? I understand, I understand the concept, I'm just trying to figure what the reality is.
It did not affect a single, any particular officer. It was the grant funding that we received as a city to fund the positions, the additional positions we received through the cops grant.
So all of that moving around didn't negatively impact any salaries or funds of the police officers at all?
No, sir. Did not. Then, in 2015, the centralizing the maintenance in the process appeared to reduce the budget, and an inquiry was made, said it looked like we had reduced the police budget by $1.1 million, but that's not the case. In 2014, we revised the budget, the budget was revised, it's $12,260,000 compared to fiscal year 2015, $11,738,000. And if the budget for the police department included internal service charges that I just mentioned, then they'd been the same level as the fiscal year 2014 budget, and there would have actually been an increase in expenditures for PD, for the police department's budget of $599,000, or a 4.9 percent increase. And down below, just breaking them down into general categories within the fiscal year 2015 budget, there was an increase of $759,000 in personnel. Commodities increased by $79,000. Contracts decreased nominally at $36,000, and other services were increased by $22,000. I want to point out with vehicles, as you'll recall, we did not purchase any vehicles in this current year. However, at the end of last year, we went ahead and purchased vehicles plus the motorcycle units early, and so that did not necessitate the need to do purchases this year. And so the net change again was $599,000, or a 4.9 percent increase from the previous year. And just in, put it in a different format, this is how it looks when you take into account, highlighted are the three areas that I just mentioned. There's central allocations that went over to the new, newly-created central garage allocation, building maintenance, and computers services. And so you can see just what I presented in another format. So, happy to answer any questions. I hope that answered the questions or inquiries that people had had and clarified that for them.
Did we send this information, or some information, over to, was it the Star or the Independent?
I have not sent this. I wanted to present it to you.
But I mean, did we, Stacy, did we send something to them? Because I think that was the issue that was raised in an article.
We have sent something similar to this, but not specifically this.
Okay, so it's been disseminated to the public through the, through the newspaper, or at least to them. Whether they publish anything, that's up to them.
Correct. Some level of information, not this specifically.
Okay.
Right, but the explanation of centralizing funds and specific budgets was sent to them.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Very good. Item six is consent agendas, or motion to approve the consent agenda printed.
I'd like to say though, Mayor, that this, excuse me for being late, I'm trying to process here. This is actually an explanation and some clarification of what has been out there in the public and what has been publicized. It doesn't give any indication as to what this council is doing or how we're moving forward, or any type of defense of these statements. We're just trying to clarify things. Am I correct?
Yes. It doesn't have anything to do with what council's going to do going forward with the increases that we've talked about. It just, there was a comment made that it looked like that the police budget had been cut a million dollars, and we just wanted to point out that it hadn't actually been increased. All it was for line items being moved.
I like the fact that we did this because I think it's important that we get out accurate information in response to any, when stuff goes out like that. So that was the good part about, about the report, is that these are the facts, this is accurate information, and people out there saying anything, they don't work in Missouri City, they don't get the accurate, and they obviously don't understand the budgeting.
But had they asked ahead of time, they wouldn't have made that statement either. So, all right, Councilman Emery made the motion to approve the consent agendas, or a second? Second, my Councilwoman White. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven, our public hearings and related actions, 7A.
7A1, an ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of 37.96 acres of land from LC-1, Local Retail Restricted District in Part, and LC-2, Local Retail District in Part, to PD Plan Development District Number 98 to provide for residential development, describing said 37.96 acres of land regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Have there been any changes to this since the last?
There have been. Council amended the ordinance at the, on the first reading of the ordinance.
Right, that's what I mean.
And the following sentence was added, minimum architectural masonry compatible to the surrounding area would be applied. If council wants to clarify what the surrounding area is, and that could be added to the ordinance, but right now, it's just a sentence, minimum architectural standards compatible to the surrounding area. And then also, a minimum square footage per house on each lot of 1,500 square feet was also added to the ordinance.
Okay. And there are a number of people who have signed up to speak. So, Tony Sherman. Where's Tony? There's Tony.
I get in the hot seat first.
Huh?
I get on the hot seat first.
Well, sure.
I brought my notes here, so you all have to, I won't, I won't have to use them. You know, Council, I wanted to start off, first of all, by expressing my appreciation for the work that you do. I know that, you know, you're sitting in a position where there is no pay to speak of, and you have a lot of hours invested in what you do, and obviously, you have a heart for service, and I particularly want to thank you for having that heart to serve the citizens of Missouri City in the way and fashion that you do. I'm moved to make that comment because there's been too much that I have seen on the national level, on a city level, state level, where there's a whole lot of ranker, people disagreeing with each other, arguing with each other, nobody is moving. It's been, it's been real difficult to even look at the news. From the last meeting that we had here, you know, I observe a way in which you interacted with each other, and the way in which you interacted with each other was brought up to me when we went back into the community again, where people felt that it was beneath your professionalism to be taking shots at each other on a personal basis. And it seemed like some personal, some personal roadblocks got in the way. So we're seeing this on TV, and we're seeing this through the media, that you can disagree with each other, but, you know, we as constituents would like for you to have that behind the doors, but come out here and represent some professionalism that you have in the past. And I realize that some issues are hot-button issues that kind of pushes your button, but I don't think I need to be specific, but we would like to see you continue the high professional standards that you've always been engaged in, in the past, no matter what the issue is. Now, having said that, I spoke the last time on this project here, I spoke against it. And I'm here to say that as a result of the information that I was able to get after three meetings with the landowner, after six meetings with my neighbors, after multiple emails going back and forth and what have you, I have a much clearer understanding as to what it is that we're faced with here. And so therefore, I'll be very brief by saying that based on the new information that I was able to get, and the clarity that I was able to get from the landowner in terms of what he wanted to do, and the fact that he did not have a contractor or developer at the time that we spoke, and we were only dealing with him, sounds like my time is up, I have come to the conclusion, Jerry, did you do that?
No, I wouldn't do that to you, Tony.
Okay. I've come to the conclusion that, that the people that I represent over there in the concerned citizens in Meadow Creek will not stand in the way of this, this PD, and we ask you to vote for it.
Very good. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
And thank you for your work on this. I know how much time you spent on it as well. Robert Mohammed.
So this means nothing. Mayor, City Council, once again, let me reiterate what my neighbor, Tony Sherman in Meadow Creek said. I too rise to withdraw my opposition to this particular item and ask that it be approved I still ask that the concerns that I raised before be addressed, and it would be addressed by this body, and that would be in terms of traffic control, the necessity for street widening, Staffordshire Court Road, pedestrian crossing, particularly sidewalks as it relates to Glover Elementary, probably some traffic calming measures that need to be taken place so the children can cross the street safely. Also, again, I need an assessment, a quantitative assessment on the fire and police capacity, that if this number of rooftops are added, what will it do in terms of our man and woman power in terms of fire capacity? I'm also going to ask this body to, if this property or when this property should be sold, and there's a permanent project on this, on this land, that this council, along with the communities around it, work with the developer so we can put a product on the ground that either equals or greater than the present value. I want to also offer a personal apology, as a professional planner, to the planning staff and to the planning commission, particularly after reviewing the meetings and the documents of their work. They did their due diligence, but unfortunately, I didn't have all that information, and I trusted my neighbors, and we just got it all in, all into it. But I did oppose it on these measures that I spoke before, but I withdraw that opposition. Lastly, I want to reiterate what Mr. Sherman said about colleagues in consideration. You know, when you're elected at large, you have to think, speak, and act for the whole. That's important. But because of the Voting Rights Act, you know, they broke up at-large voting schemes, and they made sure they had district councils. And that's so that the individual constituencies could always be represented. And I asked of the at-large, and mayor and at-large, always that when you're doing something for the city at large, that you consider the districts and things that are done. And being colleagues, I don't want the districts to be suffering from the tyranny of the majority, and that their, their issues be considered. To the district colleagues, I ask that, that you always take a great interest in the projects that are planned and vetted in your particular districts. But remember too, that you have to think for the whole and speak for the whole also, and the whole city should not be held hostage to an individual district. And whenever, from the future point forward, something is done in a particular person's district, whether it comes, I would like to see, and I hope to see, that we would consult with that district, that, and win that district city council person over to that particular project, so that we can go forward and move forward in the city. And once again, I thank you, and I move and ask for approval of this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Fattoneau.
Honorable Mayor, I withdraw my speaking time, but I also withdraw my opposition and hope that the council will go forward with approval.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Bob Nelson. Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Nelson. I am a life member of VFW Post 4010. We're located at 2200 Staffordshire Road and have been at this address since 1978. We are a for-profit entity, and subsequently, we pay taxes. Civic programs we currently support financially and personally are the high school ROTC programs at Elkins, Dulles, Clements, Kempner, and Willow Ridge, the VA Hospital Spinal Ward, Spinal Ward, where we visit once a month and provide food for all the patients and staff on that floor. We have been doing this function for the last 35 years. Boy Scout Troop 1410 of Missouri City, and the Missouri City Police Auxiliary. To support these groups, we raise money through bar sales, hall rentals, and barbecue cook-offs. We had a fourth, very large fundraiser, which was our turkey shoot. And from it, from the proceeds from the turkey shoot, we were able to purchase and donate to the Missouri City Police Department the very first camera for one of their squad cars. We were also able to sponsor the police and firemen's barbecue banquet for all of Fort Bend County. With the encroachment of the residential housing in this area, however, this particular method of funding was eliminated. The elimination was accomplished through the issuance of a noise ordinance brought on by resident complaints. The loss of this fundraiser tremendously curtailed our ability of the VFW to support our civic programs in a manner we would have liked. The VFW property was purchased because of the current zoning and being in an ideal location for access by our 262 members plus 101 ladies auxiliary members, many of whom prefer not to go to the local area bars. They prefer the camaraderie that they achieve at the VFW Post 4010. If this rezoning ordinance passes, it will virtually shut down our post. I say this because with our remaining fundraisers, we occasionally get complaints from our residential neighbors despite being 1,000 feet from VFW property. With the addition of 185 homes to be built at almost arm's length from our property, it will be impossible to satisfy these new neighbors. Because of this, and the disastrous effect it would have on VFW Post 4010, we strongly urge you to vote no on this proposal. Do not allow this condensed housing plan to occur. Please allow our veterans to keep a place they call home. And as a final point for consideration, this 37, or 38-acre parcel of land was purchased by Mr. Ray Lofti without knowing what city council would do with the rezoning proposal. With this uncertainty, there must have been a secondary plan for utilization or use of the property. We hope that you keep the current zoning and let Mr. Lofti implement his secondary plan. On behalf of VFW Post 4010, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me, Mr. Nelson, let me ask you, you all have done away with your turkey shoot, have you not?
Yes, sir, we have. We, um...
You had to do, you had to do away with that after, I guess, the Canon Eye homes were built over there, and...
Correct.
We also have an ordinance against discharging a firearm in city limits. I think that probably did a whole lot to do with it, did it not, Chief? Huh?
Yeah, it didn't go well, there actually was a provision for their turkey shoots, or actually for fundraisers like that, it's, yeah, now gunfire probably not well received by the neighbors nearby.
Yeah, I would imagine that's probably true. All right. It's all the public comments I had, is there a motion?
Move to that.
Second.
Mayor and council, staff does have a request for clarification. At the previous meeting, council adopted language that provided that at a minimum, architectural design standards shall consist of architectural masonry compatible with the surrounding area. After review of the three neighborhood requirements, those do range from 0% in one neighborhood, another neighborhood at 50%, and another neighborhood that has split requirements within those sections ranging from 0 to 51%. In the event that council desires to have a specific standard to provide meaning to that, staff would recommend that a minimum of X% of exterior walls excluding windows and doors shall consist of masonry. The two sections that do include a masonry requirement have either 50 or 51%.
I thought Councilwoman Ford had suggested 50.
We discussed Bradford Village and their standards. Mr. Lofti, are, are you able to come up? Are you able to, is, were you able to discuss with Mr. Lofti Bradford Village standards Are you aware of Bradford Village standards that we discussed?
Yes.
Okay, okay, you're okay with that?
That will be fine.
You sure?
Sure.
Okay, okay, I just want, I don't want you committing to anything.
I thought that was your.
Because we discussed Bradford Village, I just wanted to make sure.
So what is Bradford Village, is it 50%?
That's 50%. So if council is willing and the motion may be amended to provide a minimum of 50% of exterior walls excluding windows and doors shall consist of masonry to provide a specific standard within the ordinance.
And, and Mr. Lofti, are you okay with everything in the PD? I mean, because this is kind of your last and final say so, so.
For sure. First of all, thank you for y'all going through this and thank you again, that's all I can say. And I would like to, I haven't seen the PD yet, I mean, since last three weeks, but what you're saying, it's, it's, you know, it's been approved last time. I would like to share something with you all, if it is okay, that is, I contacted D.R. Horton because I heard here and there, what's happened to D.R. Horton, what happened to D.R. Horton? D.R. Horton, they send us that $100, what do you call it, optional money, you know, for the contract, in other words, they send even that one back to us, which it means we have no contract whatsoever with them. Therefore, last Friday, I contacted them, I said, well, I'm going next Tuesday to the final, the city council, and this is, are y'all gonna be in, are you gonna be a player? If that is the case, please send me an email or something, just let me know, what is your position? This afternoon, I just find out around 5 o'clock that they sent me an email, and I would like to read it to y'all if it is okay. And this says, Dear Mr. Lofti, should the city of Missouri City allows the rezoning of your 40 acres track to allow for 45 foot wide lots, D.R. Horton would have an interest in purchasing the purchase of your track under terms to be negotiated, it means still, we would also like to inform you and the city that our minimum square foot would be 1,442, 1,442 a square feet. If you have any additional question, please let me know and I will provide the necessary information. This is what I received from D.R. Horton, and the difference will be about 58 feet from what it was approved. Okay, we could say now just keep it at the 1,500 at the Bradford, excuse me now, Bradford Village minimum was 1,415 a square feet. And if you want to just go with 1,500, then that's fine, there will be a good possibility that we will lose them. Simply, the contract started with them last May and they went through a lot of due diligence, environmental, and even the site plan that we are looking at this one was prepared by D.R. Horton. Therefore, this is the position, I'd just like to share it with you all, if you're considering it, you want to have D.R. Horton as a part of this, you know, project as well, then the starting will be that 1,442. If it is doable, if you all agree to it and you are willing to change it to that, then we'll have them in a game as well, if not, then we'll just have to see whoever is come after that.
I personally don't have an issue with it, we're talking about something the size of a closet.
Yes.
58 square feet, so the other council members would have to decide where they are on it.
Okay. Do you mind submitting that to the city secretary to be a part of our record?
So we need some amendments.
So, would I just amend it for the, what was it, 1445?
1442.
1442 from the 1,500?
Currently, the ordinance has 1,500, so that would necessitate an amendment, if that's desired.
And you're gonna change to the 50%?
Yeah, to the Bradford Village standards, yeah. So just.
If council wants to make the amendment regarding the square feet, that would amend Section E2 to provide each single-family residential dwelling shall have a minimum of 1,442 square feet.
And do we need to also add into the Bradford Village standards also?
My recommendation for that language would be a minimum at, you can do that in one motion if you want to make those two amendments.
So just.
Of, you're the mover?
Yes.
Correct. 50% of exterior walls excluding windows and doors shall consist of masonry, and if your second are approved, that would be the motion on the floor.
So move to adopt.
I'm second to that motion.
So, Councilwoman Ford made the motion. And Councilman Preston made the second, if we know what the motion was. And then the original motion was by Councilman White and the second was by Councilman Alakad.
So, the vote would be on the amendment first, and if the amendment passes, then the motion is amended, if it fails, then it's just a vote as written.
Yeah, so there was a motion and a second, all in favor of that. And then the motion by White, second by Alakad on the original motion, right?
As amended.
As amended. Any other discussion on that? We'll vote, all those in favor, motion carries.
That's it, Senator? Thank you very much.
Well, good luck, Mr. Lofti, and hopefully you can get D.R. Horton back at the table.
Thank you very much, thank you all.
Adam 7A2.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas changing the zoning classification of 1.24 acres of land from SD Suburban District to LC1 Local Retail Restricted District describing said 1.24 acre tract of land, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
This is the first of two readings, is there a motion?
Move to that.
There a second?
Yeah.
Is there a discussion?
Sure. Go ahead, go ahead. There was a, I guess, a meeting between the, the folks out there at Silver Ridge and that with the, the landowner, and I think that they came to somewhat of a conclusion. Do we have any other updates on that as far as?
We've, and what's shown on the screen are some of the elevations that came about as a result of that meeting that were provided to some of the property owners in that area, and it seemed to answer, resolve some of the concerns. One of the remaining issues was access off of Silver Ridge, and that was included in the council packets. One of the property owners indicated that she was no longer concerned with the mix of uses in the proposed rezoning, just still concerned with access coming off of that residential roadway. That's not necessarily a zoning issue, but we did share with her that we would pass that information along to you all, just so that you had that for your background.
But John would take care of that, doing plating?
Through, through plating, through traffic analysis of the area.
Also, remember, you had something? I was looking for the, the drawing here. One of the things that I know came up was the position of the driveway as originally proposed, and it was one that would, you know, create a hardship for the landowner straight across, the homeowner straight across, because it would more or less just line up directly with her driveway, so there'd be, you know, that situation of, you know, of either traffic or lighting or whatever the, the situation might be. And there's a, I'm trying to look for it, there's a median that's there at the entrance of Silver Ridge, that Silver Ridge Drive, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. Is, is there any reason that, from a city standpoint, that, that driveway couldn't be moved to the, down towards the median, so it would eliminate the problem with the situation of, of lining up with the, the existing homeowner there? And because that was, I, I think, one of her major concerns, and I think was one that was kind of supported by the other folks that were at the, at the meeting.
Sure. And let me, let me go back and maybe give a little bit of background on the ordinance. City ordinance on corner lots, commercial lots, allow driveways 90% of the property length or 100 feet, whichever is greater, from the intersection intersecting streets, barring safety issues. And that's a very important caveat in there. Depending upon the type of the use that comes in, for example, if it would be a professional office versus something that generates more traffic, there could be that safety issue, there could not be on that. Also, Sienna Parkway is a very, very congested roadway out there, and there is a provision with cross-access where we would encourage as much of that drive, that traffic to enter and exit at the light that would be serving the, the school, primary road school and would across-access to this site as much as possible. What I'm trying to say with all this is, until we know more specifics on the use, it's hard to make any kind of a commitment because we don't know what safety issues may occur depending upon that use. That said, we do try and balance everything in our ordinance, not just from a traffic safety, from a general engineering practice, but also from a quality of life standpoint out here. So that is something that would be looked at when we do know a specific use and do a traffic impact analysis. It is very possible that a right-in, right-out driveway would be the warranted driveway on Silver Ridge Boulevard. It's also possible depending upon use, there could be no driveway if that would provide a safety concern out there. But it's hard to make a firm commitment one way or the other without knowing more details, but I could make a commitment that at the time of development, we will apply some, the same strict industry, engineering standards that we apply to any development in the city of Missouri City. On that, yes, sir?
I got a question, on the same, same, what Councilmember Emery was talking about, is there any, any way to enlarge that picture right there?
No.
No? Okay, so I'll go back, I mean, I'll say it, that, that median that he was talking about, if this driveway would come, that would come past the median in, in order to get into this property at the way that we had it at the, the drawing that we saw at the meeting. The way I understood in that meeting was that was their issue. Not only that you enter into the subdivision and make it left into the property, you go past their median, so that's almost like you going in, in there, and you're not even cutting the median because that median is not that long, and then you're going in there and then making it left. So, as I understood, I think that was the issue, again, that's something to keep in, as you said, as the plans gets drawn, as what gets out there, that's, that's, that was the way I understood of that meeting, that was their primary concern, along with shrubs to, you know, the view.
Sure. And, and.
Two items.
I, I understand that concern. The biggest thing is, if you get a driveway too close to an intersection, you could have a very big safety concern as well. So those are, another consideration that we look at. Now, too close, that's why we have that 100-foot limit on that, if you don't have 100 feet, it's very difficult to get a driveway in there.
But you all will, you all will also consider, I mean, there, there's some uniqueness about this project.
There is.
Normally, the houses do not egress closer to the major thoroughfare off of the entrance into that southern village.
That is correct.
Which makes it really different, which I'm sure you would take into account at planning.
And the other thing we would take into account.
What causes the problem.
Is the width of Silver Ridge Boulevard. Silver Ridge Boulevard does not meet the normal requirements for a, a, a street of that nature, so being able to safely make that U-turn movement around the median would be a very big concern of ours on that. So that is all stuff that we look at, and bear in mind, at the plating requirement stage, we don't set driveways either. It's, it's set at the engineering and plans and middle stage out there based upon traffic impact analysis and everything else. But we are very aware of the concerns of both the residents in the area and the council members on this body, and those are concerns that we will look at based upon the unique nature of those streets out there and Sienna Parkway.
Right, you know, Scott, it looks like, and I was talking to Plod, I was not at the meeting, obviously, they're looking at this as an exit-only.
Exit-only, in that case, then I would definitely suggest.
Extend the esplanade.
That could be done, or it could be utilized.
Extend the esplanade past that, and they've got the turn right coming out of it.
We have had developers make that very same requirement.
Is there a problem in doing that?
Well, we've got the, the owner here.
We have had other developers extended esplanades to make sure the driveways they propose are right-in, right-out only.
And that may be one of the things that y'all require at plating so this developer can build.
That's correct.
That answers the question, doesn't it?
That solves the problem. Yeah. Yeah. If, if in fact, the, the current esplanade median isn't far enough back to meet the 100-feet requirement, it could be, and I know that you can't tell from, from this, but it could be that, you know, if you put the exit in the middle or at, at the back end of that median, it would resolve the problem and you wouldn't have to extend the median.
That's correct.
So until you know exactly how far the distance is.
Correct.
The 100 feet.
Yeah.
You know, it may, you may be able to put the driveway there and not have any, any need to extend the median.
Looking at the area, I would imagine that, that driveway or that lot width is greater than 100 feet when you consider that Sienna Parkway is close to, or the pavement on Sienna Parkway is close to 80 feet, 85 feet by itself out there.
I just hope that it planted, because the uniqueness of, what is it, one or two houses that sit outside on.
Adjacent to the major thoroughfare where normally you would have a reserve.
Right. Then if necessarily, and we have to extend the median, then that becomes a part of that developer's project and he pays for it.
That would be consistent with what we have done with other locations.
So let, let it go to plating, they'll take care of it.
That's right.
But Scott, can you assure, you know, and I know, I know, and the council members know, that when projects do go through plating and development plans come in, that we review traffic. traffic issues and that type of thing in the review process?
I can positively 100% assure you of that.
I'll make a premise.
And I can tell you that Sienna Parkway, with its amount of congestion, is very, very closely scrutinized on all applications that come in adjacent to that. Yes, I can
I've gotten quite a few emails on this project, other projects in the past, of course, Mr. Lofti's project. And I know that that's one of the things that we look at when we're doing our reviews, but just to let the public know that all those things are taken into consideration when we're doing our reviews.
The city's philosophy is the citizens of the Missouri City have a very real and limited and very valued resource in our street system, and that's the capacity of the street system out there. And that capacity is not something to be given away
Yeah.
Lightly
Yes.
On that. So that's why we have a pretty strict ordinance with pretty strong traffic impact analysis. And we try and make sure that we husband and shepherd that capacity for the citizens to maintain it to the maximum extent possible.
Thank you.
On that.
We have the property owner here. Yes. You'd like to?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak again on this. Yeah, following up that meeting we had together with the residents, I think we came to a conclusion that they can live with. And I made a proposal whether that exit on that, on that Silver Ridge could probably be a one-way street, just an exit and not an entrance. That would, I think, slow down the traffic on that point. So when we come in from Sienna Parkway, basically coming out, Silver Ridge would, in my mind, reduce the traffic on that spot. That's my proposal to this traffic survey, which they might do there. I think the user for this project will be more like office-type kind of users, like, I mean, the people I talk to right now are basically tax advisors, like an old state, teacher suppliers, this sort of thing, yeah? We don't have, as you know, there is no possibility for a restaurant or alcohol because there's a school next door, so there won't be a permanent traffic in and out. So I believe if we could do this at a one-way street, probably, I would have nothing against it, if that would help to solve that problem. And I had the lady which lives just across the street, she's the one which come up with that problem, basically, and I think she could live with this, as far as my last conversation was with her.
So do you think they could live either way with extending, I mean, making it an exit, but do you think they could live with either extending the esplanade to prevent it from being an entrance, or moving the exit further up so that it couldn't be a
That's what I think.
Okay. And that could be done during plating?
Hearing this commitment from the property owner, we can make sure it gets happened, that it happens.
So basically, you're going to do whatever's required to get your project done through the plating process?
Definitely.
Because we can't figure out the street, we can't
No, no.
Engineer the street
I mean, I have to leave it
But the engineer's going to tell you what to do and you're going to do that.
I mean, I have to leave this also to the experts. I can't judge it.
All right.
But I'm only saying, to avoid a little bit more traffic on that spot, if you could make it a one-way exit, it probably would help. That's what I'm saying.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jennifer, were there, were there any other issues that came up after the meeting? And to your recollection, is that pretty much the, you know, the issues that they had?
That was the only remaining issue that was
Some of them didn't want to
Vocalized
Build anything, build anything on it, so.
Right.
And we did discuss at the first meeting that this is a request to rezon to LC-1 as opposed
to LC-2.
Right.
And so that also resolves some of the initial issues.
All right. There was a motion by Councilman White, and a second by Councilman Emery, all those in favor. Motion carries.
Doesn't matter. I was just going to point out that you did have some formal letters of protest which exceeded the 20% requirement, which required a supermajority of the council
Which you had anyway.
Which you have, so
Thank you.
So never mind.
Very good.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, thank you.
You voted so fast, I didn't have a chance to say it.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Seven B, your public hearing can relate to action. This is to receive comments for or against the proposed community development block grant program year 2015 annual action plan.
This is the required public hearing for the annual action plan that is being developed, not fully developed at this time, but it's under the process. Ms. Ricketts will make the presentation so we can get out of here quicker.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
The city will be submitting an annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Human Development in regards to what the city and the residents' plan are for the fiscal year 2015 funding allocation. This year's allocation, the city received, well, let me go back and just give you an overview of last year or our current year that we're in, 2014. This year, the city received an allocation of $330,211 in community development block funding. Also, our, so we are working in progress to complete those projects currently. For 2014, as you see our target map, the city, actually, the census tract was changed by the U.S. Department of Census to re-figure the census tract and block group, and that did affect the city in certain ways in regards to the boundaries. Our administrative funding for this year was $66,042. This current year, the city was able to hire a grant coordinator as to manage the program, as well as continue to fund our consultant for technical assistance for the city's programs. The city has four sub-receipients that we've been allocated, that we allocated funds to. The first sub-recipient is our literacy program. That program is funded from literacy counselor Fort Bend, and they received $10,000. To date, they have provided 24 adults with services to assist them in preparation for GED and learning English.
Those are 24 residents of Missouri City.
24 residents of Missouri City.
All of these, if you go through there, I just want to point out, these are
All residents of the city. The next one is pediatric health, which is being completed by Access Health of Fort Bend. And to date, they have, they were allocated $9,200. And to date, they have provided 16 children of Missouri City with health services. Our next program is Meals on Wheels. They receive an allocation of $9,125 to provide seniors in the community with meals, home-based delivered meals. And 18 of those seniors received meals seven days a week. The abuse child services program funded by Fort Bend, sorry, by child advocate of Fort Bend, receive $11,200. To date, they have serviced 118 children to prevent, children who are either victims or neglect or abuse, to receive counseling. Also, the city has an educational scholarship fund in which we're funding $10,000. Three Missouri City residents received that scholarship to go on for higher education. We have our owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program. That program is funded, funded to, for the CRC, and they received $160,000 this current funding year. As you can see in your slide, the breakdown of percentage for each program. The city also funded our code enforcement department with a budget of $50,000. And this year, they also hired a designated code enforcement officer that will work in our designated target areas. Our Parks Department, as you can see, we're funding a new playground in Buffalo Run. That park was insulated, and their funding was $101.49. This was actually from prior year's funding allocation, but it was completed this year. Our sidewalk project was also from a prior year's funding allocation, and it was funded this year. And that was for the Bolton Street sidewalk project. For 2015, our current fiscal, fiscal year that we'll be going into, the city received a funding allocation from HUD of $313,640. That's a 5% decrease from our prior year allocation. But with this funding, the city does plan to continue to support our public service at a decreased rate. Also, the city plans to provide state structures for the Hunter's Glen project, which is funding for this year, but that will be continued on to next year. We also will continue with our scholarship allocation, our housing rehab program, and our code enforcement program in our target areas. A new proposed project for next year will be parking lots, parking lot lights for our Hunter's Glen Park. The community development advisory committee met, and discussions were made for next year's allocation and the funding amount for our public service. The committee agrees to fund Fort Bend seniors in the amount of $11,000, child advocate in the amount of $12,000, literacy counselor in the amount that will be determined, and our scholarship program in the amount that will be determined. Also, the Knowledge First Empowerment Center will be funding, funded. Also, the city will fund, as I stated, the Hunter's Glen parking lot, and that will be in the amount of $17,000. Our code enforcement will receive $48,000. Our housing rehab program will be funded in an amount to be determined. This year, we did get a large amount of applications in, more than a prior year's. So we did have one project for economic development, and the committee will be making determinations on that. Our administrative cap is 20%, and the amount is 6272, which is just our maximum amount. That doesn't mean that's the amount that will be funded. We also have unexpended funds from prior years, which totaled up to $40,032 that the city can use for projects other than public service. In closing, our CDBG program is doing very well. We are effectively doing our programs, and our sub-receipients are following through. The public has until May 6th to submit their public comments on the CDBG program. Any questions?
What do you anticipate, Gary, the start assembling the cover over the basketball court to Hunter's Glen?
It's in procurement right now. The Parks Department is working through the contracts that are available through cooperative purchasing arrangements. We are hoping it will be in place. And I'm trying to remember what Randy told me the last time we discussed this, but I believe Mr. Troxel thinks we'll have it in place by June at the latest. We're moving forward on it, and we're not going to stop till we finally get it done.
Thank you. Is there a requirement to spend the unexpended prior year's funds within a certain calendar year or 12 months, or is there any restriction?
No, those funds rolled over every year.
The requirement is by the 1st of May, we must have no more unexpended than 150% of the prior year's allocation. Kind of a complex calculation on that. If we do not accomplish that, we have to present a spending plan to HUD, and we have to comply with that spending plan.
Okay.
It makes good sense to spend all the money.
Yes, it does.
As HUD reminds us, the purpose they give us the money is to help people. It doesn't do any good sitting in a bank account. We want to get the money out there spent and assist our citizens.
Amen.
Thank you.
Move to close the public hearing?
Councilman White made the motion. Councilman Smith made the second to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item A to appointments are none. Item N are authorizations. Item A is consider authorizing the purchase of a fire station alerting system.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff is proposing to purchase a fire station alerting system from, I'm sorry, I've lost the name of the company. Hang on a second. SHI Government Solutions, through the Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Program, and this just required council's approval since it is over $50,000. A fire station alerting system is actually the system that alerts the fire stations, excuse me, the firefighters that are in the fire stations that they have an emergency call. The dispatch, 911 dispatch center telecommunication operators we met earlier receive that call and actually send the call to the firefighters through this system. During the actual construction phase of Fire Station 5, after we had specified this station alerting system that matched currently what we use, we also discovered there was additional equipment that needed to be purchased to make it work. What was really outstanding to us was is that it was going to cost us $1,500 a month just for the dedicated phone lines to Fire Station 5, and which is about $18,000 a year. Currently, we are spending just under $30,000 a year for dedicated phone lines just to operate the four current fire stations, and just, they're dedicated just for the station alerting system. Staff began to research into this problem and see if there was a better solution, and we had discovered that there's actually systems out there that will utilize our city's internal network, the actual computer network, to do the station alerting system. The system that we are proposing for the purchase actually does this from SHI Government Solutions. The quoted amount for the entire project is 219, 341. That does include $9,000 that would help fund the interface between the OSSI CAD system, the computer and dispatch system, and the station alerting system. The staff is requesting to utilize $30,000 from savings that was from the fire truck that was previously approved for purchase. There was $625 that was approved in the budget, and the truck only cost $530,000. And we're asking to use $30,000 out of that project to help fund this in the balance of 198, 341 to come from fund balance. Also, too, this would provide an annual savings, the current annual savings of $29,974, almost the $30,000 of the dedicated phone lines. Also, too, just putting some figures to this, it's, if you count in the amount of money that we would pay, the $1,500 per month to connect Fire Station 5 plus the $30,000, the return on investment on this program would be four and a half years, and we estimate that this system will be good for 10 years.
Chief, let me ask you, is Cedric back there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. That's why I'm here.
Yeah. How much integration is involved, Cedric, and how will your people get?
There's very little integration. Actually, the company that we're going to use is going to come out and integrate everything to what we have right now, take out the old technology and put in the new technology. It's a seamless integration. And the good thing about it is using our lines, not outside lines like analog lines. We don't have to dumb anything down. We can utilize what we have now and grow with it.
These are hardwired?
Yes, sir. And secondary solution would be radio, if anything does go out with a hardwire.
So we do have a backup?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? There was a motion by Councilman White, a second by Councilman Emery, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B is consider authorizing payment to Techstat for the 1991 Highway 6 widening project. Their motion?
Move to that. Second.
Councilman Smith made the motion. Councilman Emery made the second. Any big things?
No change. Mayor, basically, in 1992, we entered a funding agreement, the final counting came to us in 2008. We've been going through their books, and basically, their right-of-way cost was higher than expected. We have two options.
Dead gummit.
Yeah. The first option, they said they actually owe us money from money we put up in 1997 for Phase 2 of the Gessner Texas Parkway project, where Gessner will go onto the railroad tracks. If we do that, the city would get back about 300 go onto the railroad tracks. If we do that, the city would get back about three hundred thousand dollars or so on that. The difficulty is, that's still an active project, and if we pull that money back, we end up losing our grandfather status and have to pay a potential six to ten million dollars in the future.
It's active in theory.
That is a, that is a chance, yes.
They would love for it to go away.
We would love for it to happen.
And they'd love for it to go away.
Before we brought this to you guys and made our recommendation, we did check with Techstat, and they did say they're trying to do design on that underpass in their upcoming fiscal year.
Is there?
On that, that does not mean that this project goes to construction really soon, because it's a twenty-five to thirty million dollar project. But if they're moving forward with design, they're at least interested in pushing it forward.
Did that come from the current new district director?
No, this was right before he got a new one. So, the staff's recommendation is to keep our grandfather status on the Gessner underpass and to pay for the hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for the final accounting on Highway Six out of fund balance on that.
Okay. There was a motion by Councilman Smith, and a second by Councilman Emery. Is any other discussion? Not to vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item nine C is consider the process of initiating the appointment of the Charter Review Commission and direct staff accordingly.
Mayor and Council, your city charter requires the appointment of a charter commission every four years. A council member has requested a early consideration of that for this year. The next charter commission would be required to be appointed in July of 2016, based on the last appointment in 2012, because there is a little bit of gear up on the part of staff in that we would work with council to coordinate the members who would sit on that commission. We are discussing this at this time to seek any council input.
Well, I think, actually, I think if we're going to do anything, we need to wait to after this election. So, if we get new people on there, they get a chance to have some input. I'm not against doing something, but I think with this close to the election, we ought to wait to allow.
Don't lose anything.
They would get input, wouldn't they? The commission would need to be appointed in July, and in fact, your charter does require that it be appointed in July. There was a request to place that as on this agenda for discussion at this time.
Well, I move to a dot.
Second that.
Can someone refresh my memory? How did this come about? How was this put on the agenda and asked to move forward on this?
I requested to put it on the agenda.
Okay. Been a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
So, that means, Caroline, that if it gets approved, right?
Well, staff does not have a recommendation at this time. Staff's only recommendation that in the event that council desires to appoint a commission, that it be done in July. And the timing of that is exactly for the reason that Councilmember Wyatt pointed out.
So, if this gets approved tonight, or if it gets passed, I'm saying, what does that mean?
It would depend on what the motion is. If the motion is to direct staff to begin coordinating a charter commission for July, staff would probably set up a special meeting with council to seek input, but of course, that appointment could not happen until July.
So, is that your one?
Yes.
And my only suggestion is that we're going to at least have one new council person. You know, the other two of y'all, well, we're going, and he'll be back, and y'all will probably be back, but the fact of it is, my deal is, is that we ought to allow that new person to have input. I mean, charter process is a very serious process, and I would hate to leave somebody out with the election just being a month away or so.
But you're not, the decision is not being made as to what that committee is going to do today.
Right.
Right?
Nor the appointment of it, because the.
That won't take place until July.
Right. So, the payment will not come in July. So, even if this is approved today, it doesn't matter. The new person's going to get to appoint.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
So, what is the staff going to do with this?
Whatever council directs staff to do at this meeting tonight.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what are we trying to fix?
For the charter?
No, not the charter. If, this was moved up. This was suggested that we, this motion is set is designed to move the decision to bring on, to at least point new two members to this board. Okay, is that, what happens if we don't do anything?
Then they're appointed in July of sixteen anyway.
And we'll still have those discussions before July.
Okay, so we're moving it up a year?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there? How often have they met?
Every four years.
Every four years by charter.
Now, how often have the charter, has there been a meeting, or has there been?
We just had one.
Just had one.
What? We had a charter, was it last year?
In twenty twelve, and the election was that following May. The charter meets for six months, so it's appointed in July, and typically ends around December with the recommendation to council in December. And then, based on that recommendation, council elects to go forward with a election or not, which typically would happen the following May.
And the only thing done at the last one was cleaning up some legislative issues that occur.
Over time.
Four years.
And some archaic language and some things. There were no substantive changes.
There were no substantive changes. There were some changes to clean it up.
So, what is the sense of urgency to move it up? I mean, I think, I mean, I don't, what is the sense of urgency? I mean, explain it.
Well, there was one issue that came up this prior year was the mayor pro temp. Another issue that has arisen is our elections. So, the sense of urgency is it needs to be done. I mean, council can take a vote if we want to do it. That's fine. I put it on the agenda for those main two reasons.
But do you understand that even if we appoint a charter review, it's still left up to this council to have an election?
Yes.
I mean, it's two separate things, okay? And, I mean, I'm just.
I understand how the process, yes, I understand how the process works.
And we can't at least wait until, my only deal is, if we got somebody new coming on, I think they ought to have an opportunity. If you're talking something as serious as what you're saying, I think that new person.
They will have an opportunity, though.
Then we don't need to do this tonight.
I mean, we can vote. We have a motion and a second, so.
I don't see the urgency. We do have a motion.
And to clarify the motion, it's to.
Move it up a year.
Consider initiating the appointment of the charter commission in July of twenty fifteen.
I don't see a reason to move it.
Is there any, was there any being harmed in moving it up, or are we going to change anything drastically for moving it up?
I don't know. That's what Charter Review Commission's going to have to.
I think council can make that decision anytime they want to. Even though we did it, we can call, council can call for another Charter Review Commission next year or the following. If it's so true.
There are few, your charter requires an appointment of the commission at least every four years. State law does specify, though, that you cannot have an election more frequently than every two years. So, it can't be every year, but if there is no election, there could be. If there's an election, there'll need to be a two-year wait.
Well, I thought as far as mayor pro temp issue was resolved, I thought we'd resolve that internally.
I'm not going to be mayor pro temp.
No, but I thought we'd resolve that internally and decided that we would rotate it, as I suggested three years ago. That's not in, that's not in the charter. The charter just says that council will elect a mayor pro temp. Doesn't say it's rotation. It doesn't say who it, or how many times you can do it. So, I think, again, we need to internally decide if we want to do the rotation basis, as other cities do, or.
But it should be done via the charter. I think whatever we, correct me if I'm wrong, Caroline, that it's only applicable to the council that agrees on that arrangement.
That's correct. Any given council could rescind any adopted policy. I don't believe you have an adopted policy on the books at this time.
So, basically, you would take that right away from council that comes behind us and say, this is in the charter, so you have to do this, when they may not agree with that. Because before you all came, we were all satisfied with the way we were electing the mayor pro temp. Then, there was issue about the mayor pro temp. I even agreed that if we did the rotations, since I'm the second longest person up here to even remove myself, so I wouldn't even get a chance to serve until everybody else served. So, what's wrong with that?
It should be done via the charter, and that's not the only.
It's not in the City of Houston charter.
Well, we're not.
You're elected among your peers.
There's other issues also. I mean, we can go ahead and take a vote.
Sugar Land and Pearland and those other cities. Is this a one reading order?
This is just an authorization, and any specific authorization that council would desire to direct staff to take.
Well, I'm going to wait till Mr. Marulus get up here before I agree. How you doing, Anthony?
Oh, he is back. Well, there is a motion and a second.
Well, I'd like to know what all of the issues are. Say, there are other issues?
The two specific ones I was referring to was mayor pro temp as well as the election. Those were the two. But I'm sure there are other council members that have other.
You're talking about the elections being in May instead of November. Well, let me just tell you, and I'll tell you like I told Mike Gibson, there is a resolution that's been passed by every single city in Fort Bend County, signed it, to leave their elections in May. There was a unanimous resolution passed by the Texas Municipal League to leave city and school elections in May. Why are we trying to go against what everybody else wants?
And council, it would be my recommendation that any substantive charter changes be a product of the Charter Review Commission, and that this discussion be limited to whether or not to initiate an early Charter Review Commission and any specific directions to staff in accordance therewith.
What does that mean? Tell me what that means in more layman terms.
Okay. Well, typically, what would happen, every four years, staff will initiate the process by coming to council and stating, you know, every four years, your charter requires a commission. This year, you will need to appoint a commission. Staff, without any additional direction from council, would be bringing that to you in 2016. Because of the request to put it on the agenda now, it's been placed on the agenda for council to discuss and direct staff in accordance therewith if you decide to do that. You're only limited by the charter's requirement that it be done in July. So, staff is willing to take input from council on how to handle that for this year.
In 2016 is for the 2016 election?
July of 2016.
July 2016 would be your appointment. The commission would run through December. The.
I just want to see if you want to wait.
The election could be, though, the charter election could be in May or November. There's no requirement that that be, since that's a special election, that it be held in May.
Right.
Typically, from that timing perspective, though, that's how it's typically handled by previous councils.
Okay. I haven't seen a reason. All right. Any other questions? Been a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion? All opposed? Motion fail.
I want to mention something, no mayor, to this.
Yes, sir.
I want to make it very clear, is that if that motion would have come up, and I firmly believe that the change in the voting process from May to June, I firmly believe that that will be a benefit to the city. That's my personal belief.
May to June?
Yes. And, but, what I won't be a part of, and I'll just refuse to, is to be a part of any type of strings being drawn from outside sources to manipulate how Missouri City runs their business here.
I agree with you.
So, I will never be a part of that, regardless of what the consequences are and however that can be spinned to say that there's not a cooperation or what have you. Missouri City is a city that's, we all can be proud of. We do good business here. We have situations where we have conflict. The conflict is good, because when you have seven individuals on council, you have, sometimes you have seven different opinions. But most of the time, most of the time, we vote, and we vote in such a way that Missouri City moves forward. But I will not be a part of anything where outside sources try to manipulate the way Missouri City is run. Won't do it.
And I agree with you again.
I do, too.
Because that's exactly what's trying to happen.
Yep. All right. I think D and E we've removed from the agenda.
Staff does request continuation of those to a future.
Right. We'll continue those to the next meeting. F is to consider authorizing the purchase of a data backup and an email archiving solution.
He comes again.
Yeah. We don't have a, we had data backup with all the open requests. We've had a simi.
We do have data backup right now.
Yeah.
This is a better solution, right?
Correct. It is a better solution. Right now, the current solution that we have is end of life. It's been end of life for a few years right now. It's a tape backup solution. The problem is, it's taken a long period of time to do backups. When it takes a long period of time to do backups, you don't get full backups. Longer backups, it takes more hardware and equipment, which we need more tapes. The new solution will give us this-to-this backup. We'll have internal D R solution, disaster recovery solution in-house, which will get us over a hump where we need to have day-to-day backups. Right now, currently, it's taken about seven days to do full backups of the whole entire infrastructure. This solution will take one day. So, we don't want to put the city in a position or a liability position where we need to recover data for any individual. Also, with the solution, it will also help legal and the city sec to pull archives when they need to pull them and not use company resources or the city resources to pull the information for them.
And the cost?
With the solution, the cost costs two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
How much?
Two hundred and forty-eight thousand. We do have, we're going to use the replacement fund for the solution also. Technology replacement fund.
Where are we going to get all this money we're spending?
Didn't it say end of novels again?
I mean, Russell's got big numbers. This is a big number. And we got police salary increases. Where are we going to get all this money from?
Well, of course, some of the issues like police salary increases, we're going through the budget process now, and we'll have some information to take to the Budget Committee sometime within the next few weeks with regard to those. This particular item we're discussing now, funding comes from the I T replacement fund, where each year, the general fund puts money into that I T replacement fund, so.
So, the money is there.
We can deal with situations. It is there.
I just, a little concerned we start pulling from reserves to do all this stuff.
This is the purpose of this fund, is to make these replacements.
Items nine A and nine B on your agenda, we are asking that you take funds from reserves. That's not the case with regard to this item, though.
Excuse me. What is the projected return of costs? What are you?
Three years in return.
Why didn't you lease it?
The solution, well, I'll grow the lease. You're looking at a solution that can last us for about eleven years. The lease will be three years. And also, with the solution that we're going to put in place, give us a warranty recovery on hardware and software solution.
Don't mess with seven.
Does that sound good to you?
Yes.
All right. Is that your motion?
Yeah, I'm going to take that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item ten ordinance is ten A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending the general budget for the.
the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, ending June 30, 2015, transferring various appropriations among accounts appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
And this is nothing more than an annual move, so is there a motion? Budget Committee?
We recommend just making adjustments.
There a second? Any discussion? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Way to go, Michael.
Good job, Michael.
Good work, Mike.
Now, if Wes had been, it would have asked him 15 questions. We left you alone. Ten B is considering ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 54, manufactured homes of the Missouri City Code, amending rules and regulations regarding the placement of manufactured homes and the operation of manufactured home parks, providing for appeal, providing penalty, and providing for severability.
Before you start, just tell me what a manufactured home is, and then you can, so I can get a clear understanding of that.
Well, when I was growing up, we called them house trailers and mobile homes. But in, I want to say, 1978-
They went the double wise.
US Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, as I refer to it, and federal government determined there should be HUD code manufactured homes. These are homes that are built-
Prepaid.
To the standards established by Housing and Urban Development. They're built on a chassis, and they're delivered, and they can be movable. They can be set on a permanent foundation, as opposed to industrialized housing, which is kind of the same thing, but it's built to the International Building Code. I'm sorry, you wound me up and got me started, y'all probably wanted to get through with this. It's been 14 years since we've looked at this chapter in any extent, and what we're really hoping to do tonight is to work toward the strategic goal of having quality development through build-out by regulating manufactured housing. And I'm sorry, it's real hard for me to say that without having an adverse reaction. The legislature gives us the opportunity to limit the replacement of a manufactured home to one replacement unless there's a fire, hurricane, or other disaster. Then there could be multiple replacements of it. We have about 15 of them in town, best I could count from aerial photographs, mostly located along Fifth Street near the Independence intersection. Barker is the street where they seem to be concentrated and right at the edge of our city limits. We also get our definitions consistent with state law. We delete references to permits that are from other, required by other chapters. New requirement for a manufactured home, manufactured home park site. Also, permit issuance was in the city secretary's office. It surprised them when I called and asked, "Have you issued one of these?" And they said, "What?" Because we haven't issued very many, and we have very little need to. As you know, we have one tract that is owned multifamily in the city. It will soon be completely underwater in Buffalo Run Park. And they're deleting provisions exempted by state law and removes some antiquated provisions. We believe this brings us in line with state law, protects us in the event of a challenge. Last time we really dealt with this was after Hurricane Ike. A home out on Trammell Fresno, out at the end of Trammell Fresno, was destroyed in the storm or severely damaged in the storm. They were trying to replace the home. An elderly lady lived there. Were not able to replace it simply because they could not get the state to approve the private wastewater system that was on that property to accept the new home. In replacing the home, you don't get to make it bigger, you replace it with the same size home. And if you have a mobile home, there was an old statute that said you could replace it with a manufactured home. Don't think we have any mobile homes left in town, think they're all manufactured homes, and this will limit it. And we can see, as time goes on, into manufactured homes in Missouri City, unless there's a manufactured home park that's approved by this council.
And I think the only way you can homestead one is to take the wheels off, skirt it, and cut the tongue off of it.
That's right. That's probably right.
That's the only way we would loan money on them when I was a banker.
Otherwise, it moves.
They're no longer mobile.
It's got to be fixed.
You have to take the wheels off, block it, skirt it, and cut the tongue off of it. Now, the danger to that is, if you can go right up here off Stafford, right off 1092, you will see an entire subdivision that was built by Fort Bend County Housing Authority, where they did nothing but take mobile homes in there and cut the tongues off of them, took the wheels off of them, and made an entire subdivision out of them. And you ought to see it today.
I can assure you, I believe that the regulations we have here are good. From personal experience of where I grew up, and there are still precious little regulation about manufactured homes being placed in that community, and I do not think it's a benefit to that community.
Move to that.
Okay. There a second? All those in favor? I'm curious.
Yeah. Sorry. Tell them you did this.
All right, item 11A.
A resolution of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Exhibit A of Resolution Number R 1513, adopted on March 2, 2015, supporting legislation creating Missouri City Management District Number One, amending provisions relating to park bonds, providing for appeal, and making other provisions related to the subject.
Evening, Mayor and Council. As we've talked about in the past, this is dealing with the Missouri City Management District Number One, dealing with parks bonds, is that to help us give a little bit more control over it, where we kind of take it out of the state legislature process and then have the city have some control over it as well. And to take a look at that, as you saw in your memo, is that with the statutory provisions there, they not apply with regards to the limits, and then also to, on the bonds, but then it would give us a fact to be able to, you as council, exert some control over it with regards to the legislative process.
And let me just, and I should have said it then, while we took D and E, 90 and E off, it was to appoint the boards to these two management districts, and as I met with Steve before the meeting, and now that Tom is here, we have a hard time establishing a Missouri City district and not a single Missouri City person own it. So between now and the next meeting, we're going to come up with some names of people to go on that, and that's why we removed it off and didn't vote on it tonight. So if you all have people that you'd like to nominate, and they understand what they're going to be on, let me know, so that I can let Steve and them know ahead of time, and we can put those names on the agenda for the next meeting and adopt those. I think each of you has a list of those that have been appointed early on, and there's nothing wrong with that, guys, I'm just saying they were trying to expedite this and get it through the legislature and get it done, didn't intend to slight us in any way, but now we have an opportunity to-
Is there a summary of responsibilities that, I mean, if you go and ask somebody to be on this board, you know, you're going to say, "Well, what are my responsibilities?" Do we have a summary?
Steve, you want to address that? It's not a whole lot different than a mud board.
Okay, well, yeah.
This got to have some common sense.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Steve Robinson with Allen Boone Humphreys Robinson. The Management District Board will function very similarly to a municipal utility district board. They will have monthly meetings that they will attend. They are public officials. They will work with the development team to provide, their primary function is a provision of infrastructure to allow quality development to go in the area. So they will have monthly meetings where they are bidding public construction contracts for water sewer drainage. Management districts are just slightly different in the sense that they do have the ability to provide supplemental services, which is their primary difference from a municipal utility district. So they may be a little bit more involved in supplemental, things like supplemental security, supplemental landscaping, you know, things that, that go above and beyond what are typically city-provided services. The best example would be, if you think about the Galleria, that is a municipal management district over that area that provides additional landscaping, artwork, those things. So most of the functions will look very similar to a municipal utility district, they just may be a little bit more involved in amenities and services.
And it might help that we define what the boundaries of those two management districts are, and really try to find people who live within those districts, I think is a-
Yeah, they're both undeveloped tracts at this point, but certainly, we're open to hearing names.
Yeah.
And on the primary motion, the original language put some restrictions that may or may not be what you want to do going forward, depending on the type of project. It would have restricted us to doing only those park projects that municipal utility districts do. If you look at the use of these management districts, it may be, in the future, the type of project, you want to do a more expansive, more parks or more amenity projects, and we don't disagree with the language, we just say, "We ought to have that in an agreement between the developer and the city. Leave it in your hands, not in the control of the legislature." So I don't think there's a disagreement.
Yeah.
I think it's just where that control feature is.
But again, just to find the boundaries-
Sure.
-of what those two districts are, so council understands what they are.
Absolutely, Mayor. We can do that.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
And get that to each of the council people.
Absolutely. We can, we'll get that to you shortly.
And start considering that and talking about it, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And they do get $150 a meeting.
Yeah, they do get paid.
They do get paid. All right. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, has been a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item 11B.
A resolution of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Exhibit A of Resolution Number R 1514, adopted on March 2, 2015, supporting legislation creating Missouri City Management District Number Two, amending provisions related to park bonds, providing for appeal, and making other provisions related to the subject.
There's just like one, just need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Councilman Smith made a motion, Councilman White made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. 11C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Resolution Number R 151, adopted on January 5, 2015, adopting a legislative agenda for the 84th regular session of the Texas Legislature, adding a provision relating to the development of recreational facilities, providing for appeal, and making other provisions related to the subject. This item relates to House Bill Number 2184. That was mentioned in the special meeting. This item amends the legislative agenda to allow, basically, staff action on this bill, which limits the liability of electric companies on utility property that's used for recreational purposes pursuant to an agreement with municipalities.
Very good. There a motion? There a motion?
So move.
There a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. Leadership luncheon is this Thursday at the city center at 11:30. Congressman Al Green will be our speaker, so if you have not let Stacy or somebody know, please let them know that you're going to be in attendance, so we know that you're there.
I'll get you three more.
All right? You have an answer?
I have a district-wide HOA meeting tomorrow night, 6 o'clock, city center.
You had one.
Yes.
How was yours?
It went well. I plan to be at yours, too, Florida.
Oh, thank you. I'm looking forward to that one.
You're looking forward to being there, or?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We do have a closed executive session to finish up, don't we?
Do we?
We don't have any executive session for the regular agenda that's been rendered unnecessary.
Okay.
The special reconvening.
We took care of it.
There's no need to reconvene a special meeting.
That's good news.